And then a bill will be provided. Contingencies will be adjusted. And the town manager will, I think the town manager contact person and it all kind of figures out and then there'll be credits against the fee.
Sure. But I just wanted that other attorney to understand we were working on it to get that. So I just wouldn't try to go ahead.
I would tell you that most, most-
If we can't reach an admirable agreement, we can turn it back over to town to finalize.
Hey, how are you?
Hey.
Usually it goes the other way. In my experience is that once the property owner knows that town is in, then the price comes. Because they know the town will pay anything because it's taxpayer money. Whereas developers-
We gotta pay by name, just like we did with the-
The developer will, uh, developer will figure something out. But they always figure they're gonna stake the government. DOT always pays the most, right? So, why don't you sue them?
We'll see what happens.
All right. How are you, sir? How are you?
I'm all right.
A question for you.
Okay.
I was not sure at all about that. The, one of the developers pinged me about meeting outside this meeting and I was just like, no. And you say you can say meeting. But if they were saying it's your place-
Uh, you don't have any hearings, so you can meet with anybody. People can lobby you and talk to you and, um-
At all.
Yeah, your obligation is, um, you don't really have, legally, you might not have any obligations. I would tell you that as a, as someone whose duty is to the town, um, it would, I would want to hear your argument if you didn't want to tell your other board members. Like, don't tell them that I talked to this guy.
Oh, yeah, no, then we get all the-
Yeah, it seems kinda weird, right? So, but it is generally common for planning board members to meet with property owners and developers and-
Property owners, I have no issue with. And then, what I thought is I'm representing them-
Well, they're all, they're all the same under the law. Developer could be your, your, your-
Ethically, yeah.
They're all the same.
Understood.
Yeah.
They, uh-
I have the same conversation with the board members. I'm like, I'll meet with individuals, but I'm not gonna meet with companies. It's okay, well, under the law, they're all kind of property owners. They're all property owners and so you can meet with all of them. Now, you don't have to agree with them, but talk. Yep. No, it's okay. That might not be true in the future if you guys have to get closet additional stuff or something that you can't.
I do a lot of negotiations with work, at work. Some very, 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 very hard-
Yeah.
(laughing). Oh, we're gonna go to dinner? Okay, but do you realize a steak dinner's not gonna influence anything?
Yeah, and that's kind of a weird thing. I think a lot of, I know when I'm representing a private party, usually I just wanna talk to everybody, get a sense of what their worries are, concerns. And I'd love for them to tell me whether they're gonna vote for it or not, but usually they won't tell me. Sometimes they will. Sometimes it will when they say, look, you can just move right along. I already looked at the package. I have no problem with this. But I'm like, okay, I hang up the phone. That's how I spend my time with somebody else.
(laughing).
Ferguson, who was really helpful to us in determining where to place the greenway on this property. We wanted to keep the greenways and the sidewalks separate as much as we could, except for areas of environmental impact or wetlands. It was our goal to integrate this greenway with the Kalis Falls greenway so that this would be part of a system that would provide access to the falls at Kalis Falls. About lot size, although the lots are required to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet, these lots average about 12,300 square feet, which is larger than the lots to the north and south in the Kalis Falls development. And the lots on the preserve, as shown on the sketch plan, on the north edge and the south edge are also extra deep. Matt Peach, the traffic engineer, who's a consultant to us on this project, is going to provide you with much more complete information, but I'd like to mention just one fact. This project is part of the area of Rollsville Road that will be widened to three lanes. The construction will be of the road, the road widening, will be completed before construction starts on the preserve. Again, construction on the preserve will not begin until the widening is complete for Rollsville Road and until Phase One of Kalis Falls is far enough along so the public utilities will be available. Easements and permits are in hand for the construction of the sewer outfall line and the road widening, so construction of the preserve would begin by spring, if not before. To summarize, the developer wants to build an elegant, single-family community with generous open space. The lots are larger than the minimum required, and we are conforming to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's recommendation about greenways. I will be happy to answer any questions you might have. Yes, sir.
So, what was the lot size again?
The minimum is 10,000 square feet, and these lots average over 12.
1.6 is 27,000 square feet, 1.6 units per acre, so I'm trying to understand that.
How did you get that number?
That's one of the things y'all said, it's 1.6.
Right.
Units per acre, so 43,560 divided by 1.6 is 27,000.
Well, we have to take into account the roads and the open space, but the way...
So that's not of the lot itself, that's of the whole development?
The 1.6 is for the whole development. If you take the number of units, 82, divided by 50, which is the acreage, it comes out to 1.6.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, if I recall correctly, Kalis Falls had an agreement for a stoplight at Mitchell Mill, but you're gonna go in, and I forget where the timing on that was, was it like at certain number of homes?
As soon as the Department of Transportation has the warrants, as soon as there's enough traffic to warrant, the signal will be installed.
But that was based on the Kalis Falls piece, right? So when they were actually gonna go check, I think, was that a certain number?
I don't remember that. Do you remember that? The question is when or the timing for the traffic light at Mitchell Mill Road?
When Mitchell Mill Road, I mean, when Kalis starts its development, they have warrants at certain areas. When they get to be 100 lots, they'll run a warrant on it if it's there, they build it. If it's not there, they have to come back at, is it 300? It's 300, ain't it? Yeah, we got Matt Peach, the traffic engineer for Kalis and for this project, and actually, if that's your only question about traffic, fine, if it is, we'll let Matt up here.
Bring him up.
Bring him up.
Thank you.
That's what I do, I defer to the experts. They, so my, and I understand the warrant process, it was 100 and then 300, but I think what I'm trying to get to is that you're all, at that point, the warrants only for the homes in that particular development. You've stated earlier that you would begin construction after essentially Kalis Falls does, correct?
It'll be in construction when the, when the public utilities are available and the road is widened.
So to begin their process, they have to do the right road widening and bring utilities to their piece. So once they've done that, you could potentially begin yours. And where my point being is that now it's 100, but you may add 20, 30, 40 homes into that piece.
Mm-hmm.
Are, does it change that obligation and that spaced about when they would do the warrant? Because you're now, they have 60, you have 40, you're at 100 in that same spot.
Yeah, that is a great question. So my, my understanding is that Kalis will have, I want to say, and I'm going back in memory about two years, so forgive me if I get anything wrong here, but about three checkpoints, I think 100 lots, 300 lots, maybe 450 lots, something to that regard, where they have to go and perform a signal warrant study at the intersection of Mitchell Mill. You heard Barbara talk earlier that this particular development will not begin their construction until the road is widened by Kalis. So they're starting behind, but based on market conditions, construction, there could be potential where this development is contributing some sort of traffic at the time one of those warrant studies is, is being performed. And when the warrant study is being performed, it's, we take kind of a snapshot of traffic over a regular day, while school is in session, of course, and basically you run the, there's nine warrants, and you're basically trying to go through and say, will DOT approve the signal today based on traffic today? So it's uncertain as to the exact timing and whether this development would be contributing to traffic because there's so many different things at play, but that potential does exist where this development is generating some traffic that is using the intersection when one of the warrant studies is performed. But this development does not change the requirement for Kalis at all.
Understood, but would there be any consideration from staff to have, to go early, right? Ask if they would perform that early based on, again, I'm looking at an aggregate number, right? If they're at 80 and you're at 40, you're over the first 100 essentially, because you're sharing a driveway essentially, you have the same, well, one of the, two of the driveways I think you're sharing.
There's, yeah, there's, there's two, there's two connections, so there will be some cross-traffic, but in terms of whether it would go early, the, that would, I'd have to look at the condition to see exactly how the condition's written.
I think the condition is mandate, right? You have to do it versus a ask to do it.
Correct.
There's a contractual piece of, at 100, you will do this.
Yeah.
And we're saying is, what I'm saying is, combined, if you get to 100, you do the, do you do the, the warrant as a courtesy to the town and people that live in that area?
Yeah, and what I'm not clear on, because it's, you know, what I'm not clear on is whether it's written as you have to do it right at that moment, or it could be on or before the 100th lot, so to say. So they could, they, they may be able to do it earlier, but I know it's, at a certain point, they have to stop and then perform the warrant study, but I don't know if, how early they could go. I know there's a backstop, but I don't know how early they could start.
Kalis contract says when they get 100 lots, not within the 200.
Correct. Yeah.
When Kalis gets 100, they stop and do the warrant.
Which reality means you don't have to stop, so you could be at 150 before it's completed.
This development's 82 single-family homes, but, but yes.
I'm not assuming you're selling all, I hope you do, but I don't think you sell 82, you know, in a very short period of time.
Yeah.
My, again, I get by asking, go back to, that may be a conversation you need to have and maybe staff has with, does this warrant, does this need, rather than using the term warrant, need to accelerate that timeline for them based on the combined housing units of the two developments? The other thing I still have a question on is since you're sharing those driveways, I know there were some concerns from the people that lived directly across from one of the driveways. Does that change how they're gonna do that driveway because now you're adding potential traffic to it where was not there before?
No, it doesn't really change the driveway design. In this regard, this development would, I can foresee a situation where some of this development chooses to use one of the Kalis driveways versus some of the Kalis traffic using this driveway, so it will likely come out, you know, being a wash. But what I can say about the specific driveways, we did analyze that for this study, and we found that this driveway operated at Level Service C in the morning and Level Service B in the afternoon, so we're forecasting, you know, pretty, very acceptable operations at this driveway.
And that's the one that's directly on your, on this property rather than the other two, right?
Correct, yeah. We did not analyze the Kalis development driveways as a TI, was not required in this regard because of the unit, the unit count was so low.
I don't have more questions than that.
Where does the, on Rollsville Road, where does the three lanes, where does that start and stop? Is that starting?
I believe, Jay, my, yeah.
It starts, it starts on the north of where our project comes south beside the Gail Stalings property. When Gail is there, it runs south, fills a gap and runs all the way to the south till we hit the Taco Scarborough Wilkins tract. So the whole front, including the gap, will be three lanes, two lanes on both sides and a turn lane in the middle. Curb and gutter on one side, inside wall.
Mitchell Mill, it's just past Kalis Farms.
It starts where Kalis Farm starts and ends where Kalis Farm stops at the back.
What are the plans for buffers between you and neighboring properties that won't be redeveloped?
We're planning to, to show all the buffers that are required in the ordinance.
Okay. Meredith, can she, do you have a good reminder, the UDO is getting a little rusty for me already?
I think they're 20 feet, but I believe that's right. I'm happy to double-check and follow-up with you on that.
Okay.
But certainly, whatever the town requires, we will conform to.
Isn't there a cemetery over there somewhere?
There is.
Yes, there is. If you, on that first cul-de-sac, as you enter the property, at the end of the cul-de-sac, a little bit to the right, there is an existing cemetery, and that cul-de-sac will provide access to it. The other thing I'd like to say, you were asking about buffers, the lots on the north edge of the preserve and the south edge are extra deep, so they'll be extra deep in addition to the buffers. So I think that is well buffered from Kalis Falls, north and south.
I had, I had one more question back on the traffic and turn lanes. I noticed in the DOT report, it said that right-turning lanes may be required at the Rosel Road entrance. During your analysis, did that, did you determine if that will be in fact required?
We did not feel a need to recommend the right-turn lane. When the folks at NC DOT made those comments, that was before we had developed this memo and submitted it to both the town and NC DOT, so those comments were kind of made in the dark, but no, due to, due to our evaluation, we did not foresee a need to install a right-turn lane for this development.
Do you know if Kalis Falls will have right-hand turn lanes into their entrances?
Uh...
I see, not necessarily.
You address on their intersection. I'm giving the DOT, I made that comment, you know, those three lanes there. Before we started, I talked in the, I didn't...
Okay.
We will have to do whatever the DOT tells us to do, but probably not do interest address.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Given that it has been mentioned as a condition multiple times, the board may want to consider recommending an addition of a condition that makes the often-stated promise that this won't start, or this won't finish, or COs won't be issued until something has been achieved relating to the Kalis Falls property, that is, whether it's the completion of the road and/or the completion of some other feature, because that has now come up multiple times, but it is not a condition of the rezoning currently.
That's something that the town could potentially request?
Certainly, certainly.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're being told that this is what we're going to do, and therefore we don't need to do these other things. Well, that's not a real thing unless it becomes a condition.
And just a reminder for everybody, this is assuming that the town board approves the annexation request, correct?
Correct. It would, it would likely appear on the agenda for the board on the same evening, and the board would vote on both the annexation first and then a potential rezoning of that same land.
Being a conditional rezon, say this property owner or developer does not, decides to stop, sell it to somebody else, the condition of single homes stays with the property?
Correct. Conditions run with the land. Likewise, if Kalis Falls were to stall, that would then, if you have added the condition, would also stall this project, and this project would then either need to wait, or what I would expect would happen, is that they would come back to the town and revise their plan to provide, for example, traffic infrastructure to be able to support their 82 units.
If there, if there are no more questions for the petitioner, I see other faces in the audience, I'm assuming a neighbor or two may be in attendance who may have a comment or concern?
Positive and negative?
If you could step up to the podium, give your name and address.
Good evening, Board. My name is Alan Moody. My brothers and I own this property that we're talking about. My family's owned this property for over 200 years, and we didn't take it lightly that we were ever gonna sell, but we really don't have any descendants that are interested in keeping it up, so we thought it was a good time. But anyway, if you'll see that big gray rectangle in the middle, that's where I live and that's where I'm gonna stay, so I've got a even bigger stake in this. I feel like that Caruso Homes and the people they deal with and their, their quality of product was good, we, after we analyzed it, they will all be nice, single-family homes, and that's what I'll have to look at, hopefully, till I go home. And so anyway, I'm just putting my, you know, my thumb of approval on this entire project. From the beginning to the end, I was kind of the last holdout between my other two brothers, but anyway, I just felt like it was a good time, and that's where we're at right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What exactly would you need for a motion if there's, assuming there's a motion for recommendation for approval?
Sure, you can make a motion to recommend approval with the addition of a condition that the roadway improvements be completed before the project is built or something else like Mr. Neal recommended or suggested.
I don't know if they can influence it because it's a different piece of property, so that was more directed at staff as saying, going back to Kalis Falls folks.
Can that, what is the question, was the condition include the traffic on Mitchell Mill?
That might be a better question, Mr. Neal.
Put it into motion.
You might want to turn it that way, yeah, thank you.
The board could not place a condition upon Kalis Falls to revise their approval.
No.
The, certainly the board could with the, with the, with the, yours is a recommendation of a condition, obviously you're not imposing anything. It's a recommended condition that would be reported to the Board of Commissioners, and it's something that the applicant needs to consider, whether it's a condition that they can live with, and they'll report that to the Board of Commissioners as well. They might also report back a third option. All of that can appear in a conditional zoning case. There is something of a give and take that is a little different than what we were used to when we had everything as a quasi-judicial process with evidentiary hearings. So there is a give and take on that. So a condition could be imposed upon this site with regard to some trigger for, on the property owner with regard to something, that is, no more than X number of units would be, could be CO'd, or the combination of the two could not exceed 100, but it would only apply to this property. I would throw out as well, because I do remember the approval of Kalis Falls, there are competing policy concerns in the warrant question. The application consumes resources and time, and if you do it, for example, for Kalis Falls at 100 units and 300 units, if all of a sudden you do it at 50 and 300 units, the answer to 50 from DOT might be, no, you don't need a traffic light. Well, now, rather than getting it at 101 units, you won't have another trigger till you get to 300, and the community may be saying for the next 200 units, what the heck? So there might be, rather than imposing a condition here, I might suggest that this be added to the planning board's report as a consideration for the board and the staff to consider, and perhaps, excuse me, perhaps present something more concrete after some analysis with the property owner to the board later on, rather than trying to guess at the right balance right now. You like how I just worked through that all in my head because I really had no idea where I was going with that? Thank you.
No, I agree, I don't think you can impose a duty on the other owner because of this property, but coming back to staff and having that discussion at some point.
We certainly cannot impose anything upon the other property owner. I would hate, in pursuit of something better, ending up with something worse.
But I do like the idea of the condition of the road.
I think one thing that, if they, if Kalis Falls gets going, this development gets going, once Kalis Falls hits their 100-lot threshold, there may be 140 lots, so that may push them over the threshold that much quicker to, to have that warrant in place, so that may get the traffic signal that much quicker than having to wait until Kalis Falls gets to 300.
Take care of itself.
Yeah, because they're gonna, they're gonna analyze the traffic that's in place at that, at that snapshot in time.
Just keep driving up down the road.
Yep. So I, I feel like the, you know, the condition of having the road widened in place is probably the biggest condition we could impose on them and then allow the warrants that are already in place from Kalis Falls to let that take care of the traffic signal.
Sorry, just one more question, and just from my understanding, I think it goes along with what we've been talking about here, the, the development won't start immediately until Kalis Farm is, Kalis Farms is fully completed? No, that's, that's why I think I'm trying to balance the timeline that we're talking about here with when does the timeline for this begin, if that makes sense.
I may need Matt again, too. Okay. What we've been saying is that this development, the preserve at Moody Farm, will not start until the road widening is complete. Okay. And one of the reasons for that is there's gonna, we want to make it easier for the construction traffic for the road widening. Okay. Not to be intermingled with the construction, excuse me, construction traffic for the residential building. And one other consideration, too, and I didn't explain this very carefully before, there has to be a major sewer line that goes along the top of Kalis Falls, and that's not shown on this map. Nobody can do anything until that sewer line is completed and extended, because that will be the public utility that is required in order to get a certificate of occupancy. Nobody can do anything until that part is done. There'll be a major water line that comes down Rollsville Road, and that will be installed at the time of the road widening.
Before the road widening.
Well, before the road widening.
Get in the ground, get to settle, and then come back.
Right.
We went from the high school all the way to the southern end of the park, 7,200 feet, 16-inch water.
But that runs on the north side of the road, right? So you'd still have to come around underneath?
Go all the way to the high school, cross the high school, crossing the wall track, and come all the way down to the southern end of the Kalis Farm.
Yeah, you're going, you're crossing the street to get from the high school to the...
Yeah, cross, but the high school stops there, that's where the water line stops.
To go across.
Need you to go to the podium, sir.
Speakers need to be at the podium.
We've got approved construction drawings where the high school stops, the property stops, and it goes that other subdivision. We've got approval to bore and jack underneath the road, go over there and run that 16-inch water line all the way down to the southern end of the track, of the Kalis track. And that'll be installed and sitting there before we can do the road widening, see? And that would all...
So you're running the sewer? I mean, the, the water?
Yeah, we putting the water line Kalis is, not us.
Yeah, yeah, sir.
Apologize, Kalis is putting the water line in, I didn't want to scare my client dead to death. We've already got, Kalis has got construction lines to put that in, and also approval from the City of Riley to install an oversized line that'll be installed and come through Kalis that will basically feed all the development. I mean, the, we'll attract across the street and us, they'll be pumping in, they'll be doing that, and all of these individual tracks, they will have to have the sewer brought to their property line before they can begin.
Are they bringing natural gas down to this property, too? Is this, are these, is there?
We have not had any consideration of natural gas, but natural gas, I've seen them on Fowl running all, they've been putting that in the ground everywhere. What their plans are coming here or not, I do not know.
Big pipe back there somewhere.
Oh, yeah, that one goes on, yeah.
So I'm not as familiar with the property as I should be. However, I wanted to kind of get back to the reason why you're here today, which is you, you want to, you're requesting to change the zoning from a residential 30 or R30 Wake County to residential 3 conditional district. That's why you're here today, correct? Yes, sir. Seems simple enough. Now, I've worked on the LDO with a lot of my colleagues here, so are, are we, is, I don't remember if we're still doing R3 anymore, are we doing RM or RL or?
This one falls under the UDO.
This falls under all of that, okay, gotcha.
Under the...
This goes under the UDO, not the LDO.
UDO.
Because this was applied for way back in February or sometime, I believe, yeah.
Oh, that is correct, thank you. And these are going to be 82 single-family detached properties, correct? Yes, sir. Okay. I just wanted to get some verification on that, making sure we just don't get too deep in the woods just yet because we're not there yet, but it's good that we're here planning this ahead of time. Was that it, just to get that request?
We have to have the rezoning in the sketch plan under the old UDO to get this thing approved.
Sure.
At the time we submitted it, there were so many things going on with the new one and the changes made, nobody knew where they were gonna be.
Right.
So we, this was submitted, this was approved by staff at the time, Danny and Julie and all went through, gave us a whole list of requirements that we had to do, and Meredith picked up on that when she took over, and we've finally got to the point where we are standing in front of you right now with 82 single-family lots that average 12, 12,030 square feet.
Yeah.
We got deep lots, big lots, and like you say, we got four times the open space required. We got deep lots, big lots, and like you say, we got four times the open space required. We spent a lot of time with JG going over where he wanted, and the town wanted their greenways separated from the sidewalks, met with them, and everybody's been happy with where we are now and how this is a good infill for the people around us and larger lots.
It is an unusual request. Normally, developers are going the other direction. Okay, well, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Not familiar with your drawings, but the yellow lots, what's the green indication? Is that some sort of, you know, lower, low lying, whatever? What's the...
It's just open space. All of the green...
Behind these lots, there's open spaces. Is there any restriction on those lots, or why is it green and not yellow along these...
Yellow has to do with the 10,000 square foot lots. And when you see the yellow, that is an actual lot that's being planted and sold. The rest of it is part of a homeowners association that has greenways, that it's their responsibility to keep up. Their greenways, their wetlands, there's just a multitude of things that constitute the open space.
I don't understand, because the green is in these lots. So would these people not be able to do any work in there in that? Or is there a wetland buffer? Or is there low level, low drainage in there?
Commissioner Hill, if you turn to this page in the package, you'll get a more detailed sketch plan. That first page, we might call an artist's rendering, but this one is far more accurate, I believe. I'll let the applicant speak to that, but I found that confusing as well at first.
Thanks, Mr. Neal. Appreciate it. Mr. Hill, as Mr. Neal said, it's an artist's rendering, but that green on the north edge and the south edge also represents the extra depth in those lots and the buffers that will be required between Kalis Falls and the preserve. So...
Are the buffers on the lots or on a common area?
They will probably be in the lots. Because in a 20-foot space, it's going to be hard for maintenance people to go in and maintain the buffer areas and the extra depth of the lots, because there's always maintenance in a buffer to keep out the little saplings and kind of clean up in there so it doesn't look very raggedy. So that's why we prefer to keep them in the lots.
So a homeowner could come in and clear out his lot where he's not supposed to and take out a buffer?
Well, that's... we hope they won't do that. A buffer is supposed to be a buffer and wooded, and they're not supposed to do it.
Is there any restriction from them doing that on this? Or could they do that?
As far as I know, they could do that, Mr. Neal.
No, there's a recorded easement on the plant.
Well, that wouldn't stop anybody if they really wanted to do it. I mean, those are... that's kind of a hypothetical case that most developments have to have a buffer between uses. And a lot of times, the buffers are included in the lots because of the maintenance. Whether somebody interferes in that and puts in a tool shed or something in the back, the homeowners association will probably react to that. There will certainly have to be a homeowners association here to maintain the open space. So it's not like nobody would notice. It was kind of self-policing. It looks like I haven't answered your question.
I was a landscape contractor for 25 years, and I saw lots of HOAs, this kind of stuff happened over the years where buffers were in, not in common areas, but in there, and they got cleared out. So the buffers didn't get maintained. Repairing buffers into the Neush River, same kind of things that are there. So I'm just curious as why wasn't it recorded and then still had the 10,000-foot lots versus trying to sell it as bigger, when they're really not bigger if they've got a buffer in them?
Well, they are actually bigger. Who wouldn't want to have a buffer in the backyard?
I'm not saying people wouldn't want to have a buffer, but that, then with it in their property, it allows for them to clear or do other things that the buffer may not be able to be maintained as opposed to a recorded buffer that's there.
I think that part of the homeowners association document, that every homeowner is furnished when they buy a piece of property, will explicitly say, "You have a buffer, it's part of your lot, but it's not to be disturbed except for ordinary maintenance." And then it will be up to the homeowners association to enforce that. It certainly wouldn't be a matter for the town to enforce. It would be a matter for, as far as I can think of, it would be a matter for the homeowners association to deal with.
To the extent that Roseville permits the placement of buffers within lots under the UDO, and honestly, I do not have that answer for the board this evening, if one were to violate the buffer by, for example, clearing it or placing a shed within a required buffer, that would be a zoning violation in addition to whatever violation it might be under the restrictive covenants. But you are correct that some communities are now not permitting required buffers to be situated within the lot boundaries for just the sort of items, for the reasons you identified, most common of those being human nature. It's just, we're just a devious species at the end of the day, and that does become problematic, whereas if it is placed within the common area, that is not as common, but even then it can arise. I would ask that staff take that back as a comment, and then we would be prepared to discuss what the subdivision ordinance would require on this point, and we would note the planning board comment on that issue.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hill?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any luck working on a motion?
Just not sure how to motion.
With some recommendations?
Looking for my cue card. First of all, I'm sorry. Would it be a single motion for the recommendation to the commissioners for adding the condition of the road and then a different, or it would be a...
Your motion would be a recommendation of approval of rezoning to R-3 conditional use with the conditions provided by the applicant, plus the addition of a condition relating to whatever you'd like to propose. You don't have to have the exact wording. Staff will take that back, and we'll turn that into something for the board's consideration at that meeting.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just have one more question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One more question.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. One more question. I heard someone did mention a cemetery, so I went back to look at it, just trying to see what provisions or provisions that have been thought of regarding people who want to visit that small cemetery. Now, I'm not familiar with their cemetery, so I want to be honest about that, but I'm just looking at their homes, like, in between it, so I'm assuming there's not enough parking for someone who might want to visit, or if there is a ceremony or a service for the next person that might be in that funeral, or is that cemetery closed off for now? Is nothing?
There'll be one more body. That's it. And that's already been arranged.
And that was pretty much my question, so he kind of answered the question. I just wanted to make sure, I'm just looking at, there's no dedicated parking space, you know, for visitation?
No, we assume that people who want to visit the cemetery can park in the street.
Just on the street. Thank you.
Once again, floor is open for motion. Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion if there's no further comments or questions, and everybody can help me with this, right? So like I say, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion or recommendation that we approve this rezoning and also be... also with the approval if the applicant completely addresses the TRC comments for the proposed use of single-family detached housing. It's reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plans, future land use classification, and the character of the surrounding area. And also take into consideration, this property or development will not be started until the three-lane Roseville Road widening will be completed. We have a motion for recommendation of approval with conditions of case MA 21-05. Is there a second? A second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an "I." "I." Are there any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is the planning director's report.
Thank you. Good evening again. We have an exciting planning department update. We... James and Shelley and three other staff, we interviewed some additional candidates for senior planner last week, and we've made an offer to someone and are in the process of doing the checking you have to do for that sort of thing. And we're super excited. We hope everything works out, and we'll have someone to introduce to you shortly. So that will certainly help us with catching up on development review and cases and such. For the development report, the September 2021 development report is online. If you go to the Development Projects webpage, on the right side of that webpage, the most recent development report will be at the top. And some highlights from that report, as you know, you recommended approval for the Roseville and Wake Forest annexation agreement at your last meeting, and that was approved by the town board. Also, at the last town board meeting, business meeting, an amendment to the cobblestone special use permit was approved, and that was based on some comments that NC DOT provided on the parking areas, the ingress and egress points. They're needed to be extended without the parking, and so the parking was relocated throughout the site, so the board took a look at that. And again, go online to see the complete activity status update about permits. I know there's one note, permitting right now is definitely active. It's a little less active than it was a year ago, but it's still very active and exciting here in Roseville. The third item I wanted to update you all on is the first round of LDO technical amendments. Two meetings ago, not the last one, the one before, so what is it, October's? I guess it was the August meeting, I shared with you all some potential draft LDO amendments. One of them had to do with reducing setbacks in exchange for providing additional items such as greater building frontage, wider sidewalks, additional landscaping. And then we also looked at the cobblestone site plan as an example of what kinds of things could be administratively approved, and then what kinds of things should go to the town board for approval. So we've already looked at those. So in this first batch of LDO amendments, those two items are in there, and I'll share with you a couple other things that you can start thinking about. But first, you will get the whole package of amendments at your November meeting, and then see how your recommendation goes, and we'll take that to the town board for a public hearing and decision in December. So some of the other items that are in the LDO Round 1 Technical Amendments have to do with you all. The planning board provisions right now are in our Town Code of Ordinances, and they provide for seven members, three from the ETJ. So we recommend taking that information from the Town Code of Ordinances and putting it in the LDO. That's really where it should be. And also, right now, the LDO does not define ETJ member voting rights, and we're recommending that that is clarified and defined in the LDO by saying ETJ members can vote for any particular item that is up, or make a recommendation on any particular item that we're presenting to you all. Another item that's in the LDO Technical Amendments Round 1 has to do with correcting the activity center and neighborhood center minimum size. And I was fortunate enough to speak with previous planning staff, and there was a conversation that happened between previous planning staff and the consultant that was misunderstood. And right now, the LDO says an activity center must be a minimum of 25 acres, and also a neighborhood center must be a minimum of 20 acres. And that was meant to be more of a maximum. However, we just would like to fix that by decreasing the minimum. And to help you visualize size and minimums for mixed use, just think Bojangles is on 1.29 acres, CVS is almost 1.75, Pine Glow is 4.23, Lafayette Village in Raleigh is a little more than six and a half, Cobblestone is almost 11 acres. So when you get to that four-acre point is kind of the magic number when you can start to get a decent mixed-use project. So you can see by having a minimum in place that's 20 or 25 acres is really too big, and you could miss out on a lot of great opportunities for mixed-use development. So when we talked about this with the town board at their work session a week or so ago, they thought there should be no minimum for a neighborhood center, and maybe a three or four-acre minimum for an activity center. I just thought that would be interesting to share with you all if you want to think about that. This will come back to you at your November meeting. Another item in the LDO that we're recommending to amend has to do with the application of architectural design standards. Right now, the LDO says that buildings less than 5,000 square feet don't have to meet those architectural standards, and that means, you know, buildings like fast-food restaurants are a few thousand, couple thousand square feet. So that means, like, Bojangles or something would not have to meet that. And I would think you would want your fast-food restaurants to look as good as everything else. So staff is recommending applying that design standard to all new buildings, regardless of the size. In our Appendix A, the LDO handbook, we have nice flow charts like this and a nice table that help us understand the different processes that go on here, and we're recommending adding neighborhood meeting to the rezoning section in the LDO handbook. Right now, the neighborhood meeting information is included in the public involvement standard procedure, and it is fine to stay there, just think it'd be helpful to our applicants and development community if that information was included in Appendix A. Any comments or questions on my report?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Which brings us to the town attorney's report. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great questions this evening from board members, and this is a great trigger into and really bring everything together here. The amendments that have been proposed by the planning department and are going to come back to you next month, the questions that you raised this evening regarding everything from when warrants should come, to what should trigger a traffic impact analysis, to whether subdivision regulations should permit buffers to be situated within lot lines, whether require them to be outside lot lines, or to have something else, some sort of standard. All of those things come from planning boards more often than from citizens or from elected officials. Y'all are the most likely to be thinking about the LDO, and you're the ones who first have to deal with the application before it has been polished. So you see it in its rough form, you see the things that haven't quite been thought through. As you see those things, either ask questions of staff or catch me outside the meeting, but that is the best path to make the LDO better going forward. The list of technical amendments that Meredith is working on have really come about organically. They come because someone noticed this doesn't seem as though it's going to work exactly how it sounded like it would work when we were all sitting in those, like, Davy... how it sounded like it would work when we were all sitting in those, like, Davian and I were at those stakeholder meetings. It was all in, it was in the abstract. We didn't have an actual subdivision to look at and say, well, how would that standard end up looking? And we're going to keep seeing that, and it's going to, there are going to be a lot of them, I would expect, for the next year or two, and then it should taper off. And that was really the only thing I wanted to mention as part of the attorney's report. The law should change, and there's a process for that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Moving on, any other business? Just a quick question from Meredith, while I'm thinking about. Are there any other projects in the pipeline that are coming in under the UDO versus the LDO?
Yes. Actually, this evening, we were planning on having another case on the agenda. I think it's map amendment 2003, Broughton Town Homes. And I ended up asking the applicant, or telling the applicant that it needed to wait because TRC provided more comments than we were expecting, and they were not able to address all the comments before bringing that sketch plan back to you all to take a look at. So that one is under the UDO. And there is another rezoning case coming up, the Tucker Wilkins rezoning. Jay Gleese this evening mentioned it. It is south of what you all were just looking at, just pretty close, not adjacent to Kalis Falls, but right below that. And that'll be another rezoning case that'll be under the UDO. So I can think of those two right now in addition to what you just saw this evening, and I will let you know if there's another one. It does, for me, being new here, it's confusing to have to go back and look at the UDO, and I've been trying to learn the LDO, and I'm sure you all worked on the LDO and have made that it's usual to have to...
Yeah, don't kill that, that link on the webpage yet.
No.
Some of us may have to go back and do that reference.
Yeah.
Yes, I use that myself, although I learned this evening that there are some things on the online UDO that are not correct. For example, right now, the UDO has in the permitted use table, the one that's codified on municide code, it says that single-family detached homes are not in allowed use in R-3, and I saw that, and I was like, how are they doing that? And it's because there was a text amendment, but I, that wasn't apparent to me because it's not online.
The explanation for that is that recent amendments at the very end of the life of the UDO were placed at the bottom of the page and were not codified with municide code. So that may be a project for the town clerk to take on at some point, but focus was on getting the LDO out the door. So the amendments are of record, and they are the law, and they are there, but they are more challenging to locate.
They were for me.
Thank you. If there's no other business, the last item on the agenda for the evening is adjournment. If there is a motion...
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we adjourn?
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. We are adjourned. Thank you.